Welcome, everybody. I want to start with fires. I just made an announcement this morning. We declared another emergency declaration on the fire. It's the third emergency declaration just in the last few days. Western Colorado, the most recent is the Lee Fire, which prior to the evening of the Fourth had just been on BLM land southwest of Meeker. The Lee Fire has now merged with the Grease Fire, which also started on BLM land, that now includes federal, state, and private lands. It's growing rapidly. We have multiple evacuations. I just want to take a moment to thank our brave firefighters and first responders. I know that all of our thoughts are with families who've been evacuated, who face increased risks. We have elevated those to a statewide response and emergency declaration. We're providing assistance on the ground and in the air as we speak to try to manage those fires and prevent loss of life and property. And I also want to remind my fellow Coloradans that most fires are human-caused. Fire danger is extremely high right now. I want Coloradans to make sure that they're vigilant and careful around starting fires, whether that's campfires, automobile, cigarettes, fireworks, shooting. Make sure to do them in safe areas and make sure to take every precaution and follow laws and follow county regulations as well around fires so we can avoid any unnecessary human-caused fires here in these difficult weeks. So I'm happy to take any questions on that. But there is another announcement here today as well. This is H.R. 1, all 3,000 pages of it. A lot in this bill. This is what was being called the Big Beautiful Bill, Big Ugly Bill. It's certainly a long bill that I don't think Congress fully read. The only members of Congress only had a day or less to actually read the final provisions of this bill. It does a lot. Some might consider the things it does beautiful. Some might consider them bad. But some of them are also just mathematical, and that's really what we're here to discuss today, what this bill actually does with regard to the impact on the state budget. Many of you know we began the year with a balanced budget, which I was proud to sign in April. Our state's fiscal year started on July 1st. Not only was it a balanced budget, it was one that had a Tabor surplus. Every Coloradan was going to get a taxpayer refund. There was about a $300 million surplus based on estimates. And that has all changed with the signature of President Trump on this bill here. And it's important to understand why it changes, because a lot of what the people have talked about in H.R. 1, for better or for worse, are changes to Medicaid and SNAP. Those are in future years, most of them. That will be a budget challenge, some of them for Colorado, for future legislatures, for future governors. Some of them are implementation challenges around how we verify employment. Those are all things that are important and will be done. That's not what has the urgency of what I'm going to be announcing today. What has the urgency of what we're going to be announcing today are the revenue impacts to the current year that we are in, that throws the state budget out of balance, that costs about $1.2 -- over a billion-dollar loss of revenue. And that billion-dollar loss of revenue leads to a hole in the budget of over $700 million. Because remember, we had a surplus. Some of it is also affecting the State Education Fund, other funds. But there is actually a general fund hole, a nearly $800 million shortfall in the current year. Unlike Congress, they can spend whatever they want. This bill, as you know, increased the federal deficit by trillions of dollars. We don't do that here. That's good. That's a problem the federal government has. They need to balance their budget. I have always supported a balanced budget amendment. That's something that we have in Colorado. So we have the mathematical reality to balance this budget for the current year that we are in. The impacts on Colorado are particularly immediate. Our state is a state that largely mirrors federal tax policy. That can be a good thing for taxpayers, because it's easier and it takes less paperwork to file taxes. We, in my opinion, don't want to be a state where every individual has to file two entirely different sets of taxes, one for state and one for federal, because there's different deductions or rules. We are not that kind of state. That's an advantage for Colorado. We are not going to become that kind of state. And none of the changes that we're proposing here would make us that kind of state. We want to make sure that for individuals who file their taxes, it's simple and easy. And Coloradans will get the benefits. While this bill has many bad points, there are also benefits to some taxpayers, like no taxes on tips. That happens immediately in Colorado. Colorado is only one of four states? Four states that this year, money that's already been earned by Coloradans as tips will not be taxed. So there's a number of changes in here. They're a lot faster. Colorado conforms to federal. It creates a budget deficit, for better or worse. The impact on taxpayers depends on your tax situation. You may benefit, you may not. But there is a significant loss in revenue, largely from the corporate tax changes that are in this bill. It's not, for instance, the taxes on tips that blows the budget out. It's the corporate tax changes, some of which are real corporate tax cuts. Some of them are just a shift in timing that affects the budget in the current year, like the accelerated schedule for depreciation, one of the biggest drivers of this deficit. Today, we have 11 months remaining in the budget year. And that's very important. That means that cuts, while difficult, can be spread over a longer period of time than the regular course of the legislature. That's why today I'm announcing that I am doing two things. One is, we are calling the legislature in for a special session on August 21st. The second is, we are implementing a state hiring freeze, effective August 27th through the end of the year. And that will affect state positions, except for necessary health and safety positions. We're not freezing firefighters, prison guards, 24/7 facilities. But the vast bulk of state positions will be frozen until next calendar year, when hiring will resume. We estimate that will save the state at least $3 million. $3 to $7 million is the estimate of what the hiring freeze will save the state. I want to thank, of course, our dedicated state employees for their hard work. We are avoiding furloughs and layoffs. And we know that a hiring freeze makes it a little tougher on the folks that deliver services. But we need to show, of course, that we're doing our part to help meet these extraordinary times and the large budget deficit that has been left by H.R. 1. In addition to that, we are calling the legislature in to help figure out how to address this sooner rather than later. And that's important, because if we were to wait till next year, it would be a lot more draconian in terms of cuts or changes, when they have to be spread only across four months or five months of the year, rather than now, which is, again, Colorado begins this year July 1st. We're in our first month. We can effectively spread out the cuts across 11 months of the year, assuming that we're able to implement them for the beginning by September 1st. We're putting our skin in the game and implemented a statewide hiring freeze, extended through the end of the year. I would also point out that about 70% of the tax benefits in here went to corporations. And that is the biggest part of what is causing this here today with this budget crisis. So again, while there's legislation that's been passed in Congress that harms our state budget, we know that we in Colorado have to balance our budget. And we're ready to roll up our sleeves and get it done. There are a few other items that are in the call. I just wanted to briefly go over them. And as I've mentioned in interviews with some of you in the past and publicly, none of these other things would have led to a special session. But when we have a special session, we ask ourselves, are there other things that would benefit if the legislature looks at them now rather than wait till January? Is there a benefit to the state in the timing of some other items? And there is, frankly, on several other items. One of those is, we want to give the legislature another chance on health insurance premiums and the exchange. They were unable to act in the general session. But that was before we knew how bad the damage was. H.R. 1 ended the tax credits. And the insurers have already published their rates for the exchange, showing an average statewide increase of 28%. In western Colorado, 38%. We can and we should take action to reduce that impact. To be clear, the bulk of that impact is H.R. 1, not including the tax credits. We cannot undo that. I hope Congress still acts on that. There's time, very little time, but they can act in September to do that. But we should, of course, do what we can as a state to prevent hundreds of thousands of Coloradans being tossed off of their insurance. I just had a town hall yesterday with Insurance Commissioner Mike Conway in Eagle County. A great example is a family of four, middle-income in Eagle County, would have their insurance premiums increased from $11,000 to $35,000. Again, very few people would be able to afford $35,000. So many of folks would go on to the roles of the uninsured. And the cost shifting would lead to increased rates for everybody else who has employer-based healthcare. So I want to give the General Assembly a chance to talk about that. We also want to give them a chance to update a ballot initiative that was written, again, before H.R. 1 passed, that funds free school lunches for everybody, which I'm, of course, supportive of, free school lunches. We want to expand allowable use after the free lunches are paid for, that the legislature would be able to use some of those funds for the state SNAP match. Again, that's not next year. It's not the year after. I think it's two and a half years from now when that would become active. But when you go to the voters, that locks it in. So that would have to be changed now. If they were to do it in January, they'd have to go with a whole other initiative that November. Much better to update the current one if they do that and allow that as a use. There was also some, you know, in my opinion, kind of discriminatory language where they went after Planned Parenthood, a healthcare provider in our state that provides many services. And they were effectively, because they do also provide abortions, even though that's not the bulk of what they do, they were effectively defunded from Medicaid for their non-abortion services. Remember, they never got Medicaid federally for their abortion services, Hyde Amendment. But they do cancer screenings, they do reproductive healthcare. They are a first-line provider to many families, especially women, some men as well. And so we want to give the legislature the opportunity to allow for them to continue to provide, get Medicaid reimbursement for those state services that they provide. And that's better earlier rather than later, because real people are affected. And if the legislature weren't able to do this till February or March of next year, that's a good six-month gap that many people would have in access to healthcare and where we can avoid that. We certainly want to do that. We also will be giving the legislature a chance to address the artificial intelligence issue, AI. This is one that legislature has struggled with. And last session didn't quite come up with the changes that proponents, opponents can agree on. It's scheduled to take effect February. So that is very little time, right? If the legislature were to come back in January, that gives them very little time. But I would add, the real world has even less time, because if it's on the books for February, the state and private sector are moving towards complying now, because they don't know what's going to happen in January. And that would cost the state about $6 million. So we do want to save the state $6 million if we can. But furthermore, we want to make sure that this is settled sooner rather than later and give the legislature a chance to figure that out. What adjustments need to be made or changes need to be made are up to them. So I'm asking the General Assembly to come together for a special session at 10:00 a.m. on August 21st, 2025, addressing the revenue shortfalls of H.R. 1, ensuring the continued viability of SNAP, rebalancing the state budget, state services, healthcare, preserve access to reproductive health services, and adjust the AI bill. These are all items that I firmly believe the state will benefit from acting earlier on rather than later on. We've used these calls for extraordinary sessions sparingly in my time as governor. And when there is a clear benefit to the people of Colorado of acting soon, that's why we are calling this session. It would very much be to the detriment of the people of Colorado if the balancing actions were left into only having a few months of the year left to go. The cuts would be more draconian, they would be more difficult, it would be harder to balance the budget. Having the benefit of 11 months is a very important tool for both the governor and for the legislature to take the steps needed to balance the budget. I'm joined by Mark Ferrendino, who's the head of our Budget Office, who will be here for technical questions if you have those. I'm really confident that by working together, we can continue to carve out the very best path for Colorado, despite the federal headwinds, despite the challenges of H.R. 1. We certainly embrace the opportunities. But we also live in a real world where we know that we have to balance the budget. And with the budget out of whack because of H.R. 1, we know that it's very important to act early and soon, to not hide our heads in the sand, and to accordingly adjust the state to make government more efficient, make the cuts where necessary, recapture revenues where necessary, and make sure that we can balance our budget for the current fiscal year as well as set us up for a strong fiscal condition for future years to come. With that, I'm happy to take some questions. Marianne?
Yeah, on the AI bill, given that the legislature might have a few days to work on this issue, would you prefer to see a delay or would you prefer something more robust?
We're open to either. The call is not prescriptive for one or the other. It allows for adjustments, which can either mean changes to the policy or the timeline, or both. And I think at the end of the day, we'd like to save the state $6 million if we can. We also want to make sure that whatever system is agreed to for making sure that bias doesn't occur and discrimination doesn't occur through AI or through any source. And that's a cause, I, of course, deeply believe in, and in Colorado for all, that we do that in a way that has time for the private sector and covered businesses to adjust and be able to make sure that they're not, in fact, discriminating.
Governor, lawmakers faced a billion-dollar budget shortfall earlier this year. They were able to, they did make some cuts, but they were able to avoid the deep cuts to education and healthcare that many people feared. Will they be able to do that this time with this, you think?
Yeah, these are two different kinds of cuts. I mean, yes, it was a tough budget year. But at the end of the day, our budget did grow at the rate of inflation plus growth. It was simply the fact that some expenses, notably healthcare, were growing at a faster rate that were providing pressure on the budget. This is an actual cut, no matter how you look at it. The budget was agreed to, we had a surplus. H.R. 1 reduced our revenue. There is now a gap that needs to be met with real cuts or real revenue, simply a mathematical formula to do. I also want to be clear that I would oppose any efforts to cut education funding. And I'm confident that there will be no cuts to education funding in our schools as part of this.
Do you think this will impact people's everyday lives, cuts that are made?
Sure. Cuts are always challenging and difficult. The work of balancing the budget is difficult. You know, we would begin with some of the cuts that we proposed in years past that the legislature did not accept. And those are real cuts, and they affect people. There are things like, for instance, capping dental benefits for Medicaid, as an example. And I get that there are Coloradans, you know, and who have dental work that needs to be done. And many of them, if these cuts are made, would have to make the decision to spread those across several years rather than have that work done upfront. So these affect real lives, real people. I hope the legislature can act on the 28% increases on healthcare to reduce that and blunt that and do what we can to make sure that more people can stay covered. There's a lot of impacts of H.R. 1. You know, and there's Coloradans who will benefit. People who earn tipped wages, people who earn overtime won't be tapped on those, won't be taxed on those. But there are also real costs. And we're going to be doing what we can to make sure that we see the benefits that are in the bill and blunt the negative aspects and fundamentally, on a mathematical basis, balance the budget in a way that's as compassionate as possible for our state.
Other question? Marianne?
Yeah, Mark, you had mentioned, when you were talking to the legislative leadership last week, that every state agency was asked for a 5% reduction. Do you know what that's going to amount to? And are you still moving forward with that?
So for next year's budget, we asked all departments for their operating budgets to be a 2.5% reduction. We have been asking them, what can they move forward to this year? 2.5% of operating is about $30 to $40 million of reductions. So we're looking at what portion of that can be moved in and started earlier.
And I would add, it also will be a discussion with the legislature in the next general session, because what's important, if agencies are making cuts, is that the scope of what they're being asked to do is also proportionally cut. So we want to make sure that there's an opportunity to find real savings. Some of those might very well require legislation to make sure that a particular agency doesn't need to do the work without having to fund the work. And so that'll be a discussion for the next budget year that we'll have with the legislature in the general session. Sorry. We'll go to Marianne. Is there anybody who has a -- okay, Marianne, go ahead.
Okay. The Planned Parenthood--
Pretty calm group today. I don't know.
Is the intention here to use Colorado's Medicaid funding to cover those services? Is that the idea?
Yeah, yes. So it's to, there's a kind of punitive measure in H.R. 1. This is a big bill, there's a lot of things in it. And one of them was very punitive, aimed really at Planned Parenthood, that disqualifies their non-abortion services, their general healthcare services, reproductive health cancer screening, STD screening, from Medicaid reimbursement. We want to make sure that people are able to receive those services there.
Do you have any message to the president or his administration responses?
Well, the time for messages is done. The bill's passed. I opposed it. I tried to raise the alarm of what would happen here in Colorado were it to pass. You know, some provisions in it are good. But overall, this causes a major fiscal challenge, not just in our state, but many states are going to be struggling with this, as well as the challenge down the road, especially with regard to healthcare, with the Medicaid and SNAP cuts that are coming in future years. This will provide a great challenge to future legislatures. How do we keep our rural hospitals in business? How do we make sure that we don't have so many uninsured Coloradans that it drives up rates for everybody else? That's not for this special session, but that's also very much part of H.R. 1 and very much part of the challenges that the states will have.
Tell them to do. Just--
It looks like some of, one of the proposals here is aimed at decoupling at least one of the provisions of the Big Beautiful Bill. Why not decouple more? And how does that work exactly with Tabor? Since the changes are even made in the state tax codes, since we have the rolling form fee, we're adding back taxes.
Yeah.
Does that create like a--
So it's different when we're below the Tabor surplus than when we're above. And so with all the projections, we are below Tabor this year. So none of these changes would create Tabor surplus revenue.
I meant, like, since the tax codes are being changed in Colorado, right? It's available in the form fee. We're adding back some of these things. Doesn't that raise revenue and would voters have to approve that?
No, like, we'll leave you three things on that. Some of the items, and I'll give the example of the pass-through entity deduction, that is simply a continuation of current tax policy in Colorado. When the legislature was in session, there was no H.R. run that was set to expire. We want to continue that tax policy. The second fact is, again, that we are, what I mentioned, we are below the Tabor limit. So none of this creates additional revenue surplus under Tabor. The third provision is that many of these are de minimis and affect timing, not dollar amount. I'll give you an example. One of the biggest costs in here, what was the cost of the acceleration?
About $300 million.
$300 million of the, so of this 700, of this almost $800 million gap, $300 million comes from accelerated business depreciation. What that means is, that from the federal scoring perspective, that doesn't cost that much over a 10-year period. You can look up their scores, because what it does is they get the benefit upfront, and then they pay more in the out years. What we are looking at doing in the special session would provide more stability over time by, for instance, selling tax credits now than move some of that revenue up. We don't want rapidly fluctuating revenue in Colorado. Federal government doesn't care as much, because they have a deficit. They maybe care about 10-year periods. They don't care very much about them, because it's $1 trillion of dollars in the deficit. But they don't look at stuff on a year-to-year basis. We have to, because we balance the budget. So the proposed area that we want the legislature to discuss is, is there a way to counter-effect the moving up, moving back of the revenue to future years from that item that costs $300 million by effectively selling tax credits for future years? So there are things like that. They are all, you know, all similar. Legislature has touched some of these bills in the past. They've changed vendor fees in the past. That's one of the items that we're looking at. They've, I think in my time as governor, I think had at least two changes to vendor fees. And so these are all items that are either de minimis, we're under the Tabor cap, or just continue existing tax policy. Do you want to add to that?
Tell them to do.
Could we indicate how to balance this budget in Spanish? You said you have two options.
Yes, the two options that we announced today. All the states will be closed until August. We're not going to add more jobs or workers to the state for three months to save $3 to $7 million. We announced this today. Also, we're going to meet with the Senate in August to obtain the funds that are necessary, because the federal government passed this one, the first one, the big one, that costs the state and a lot of families in the state, a lot of health costs. A lot of money. It's important to have a plan here to have enough money for our needs.
Do Robert think that's real?
Yeah, I mean, you were just kind of talking a bit about the tax credits piece. I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit more to, like, what you think is actually a viable solution in this special session? I mean, the thing with healthy needles, that--
Straightforward.
Straightforward, because, yeah, you're asking for the taxpayers to, you know, approve that change. But the reinsurance program, for example, you know, the commissioner said that's going to take a huge hit, you know, overall $100 billion and 57% of the revenue. So I'm just wondering, like, at a time you've got to cut $1 billion from the budget, but then you're also trying to increase funding for things like health insurance? I mean, I'm just wondering, like--
Yeah, there's nothing the state can do to negate the fact that H.R. 1 discontinued the tax credits. Can we try to blunt the increases, and should we? I believe so. It was discussed last session. But that was before we had the benefit of knowing what these increases were. And numbers were being tossed around, and people said, maybe there'll be these increases. We also didn't know if the tax credits would be approved. We now know, the insurance companies have told us that they're going to increase rates by 28% across the state, 38% in western Colorado, including Eagle County, average. And so, of course, we should, I hope the legislature finds a way to take action to blunt that increase where we can.
Gabriel? I just have two quick questions. When Planned Parenthood testified at Capitol last week, they said they needed about $5 million. Does that sound about right to cover the sacrifice?
There's no money in, that's being considered for Planned Parenthood, to be clear. They might need money, everybody needs money. But we are not including in the call any kind of allocation of Planned Parenthood. It's simply about the Medicaid eligibility for their patients.
And is there a rough estimate about how much it would cost to bring everybody back into the system?
You have to ask the legislature that. That's under the legislature's prerogative. It also depends on how long they're here.
Lucas?
And then statutory reserve change? Just for clarity, you're looking for them to update the statute to require the 15% reserve?
Let me go to Mark on that.
So current statute in law says if we drop below half of the reserve, that then the executive branch or governor has to submit a plan to keep us at half of the reserve. When that was mostly in practice, most of history, we were at a 4% reserve. I remember when I was on the Joint Budget Committee in the Great Recession, Governor Ritter had to use this, because we went from 4% to a 2% reserve. But we never updated when we built the reserve up to 15%. So what we're asking the legislature is to now say, we would need to submit a plan if we lost 2% of the reserves or went from 15 to 13%, so that we wouldn't use, because half of the reserve right now is about $1.2 billion, and that is not fiscally responsible.
Let me also talk about the importance of the reserve and why we want to make sure we retain a strong reserve. The reserve is there for recessions and downturns. This is not a recession or downturn. This is H.R. 1, and it's affected this year in the budget. Now, OSPB is predicting a, what percent?
50%.
50% chance of recession. You might find economists that say 30%, some say 60%. And of course, there's also question of what the size of the downturn would be. And this data is experienced, and this country's experienced some. Obviously, the very large one in '08, '09, others in more recent years. That is when it's absolutely critical that we have a healthy reserve. So it's very important to do what we can to maintain that reserve, given the risk of a future recession, and not steal the state's rainy day fund simply because the federal government passed a bill that has fiscal impact in Colorado.
Do you ever post that nine news?
Governor, obviously, we were talking about the state impact. Have you or your office been telling locals about the impact of H.R. 1 on their counties and county budgets?
Well, most of, I mean, again, you'd have to talk to them. Most of these conforming changes are to state taxes. Local governments get their money mostly from sales tax and from property tax. Does salt affect locals? No. So I would say it's a second-order impact. It's hard to predict. You should ask them, for sure. I think that they're more concerned with some of the cuts that are prospective in future years to Medicaid, for instance, in the SNAP. That's probably more on their minds in year two and year three. But any changes in the tax card are going to have an impact. I mean, it's just, it's just hard to predict. It's not as clear and tangible as what it is to the state, It's not as clear and tangible as what it is to the state because we actually get our revenue from these sources, they get theirs from sales and property.
Some of the changes you're asking for to close the tax loops, why haven't they been closed already?
You'd have to ask the legislature. We we have. I mean, I don't think anything here is something that I previously opposed and now support. It's all things we've talked about or supportive of. You know, when there's not an urgency to do it, I think people are less likely to do it. And frankly, when there's a Tabor surplus, it's legally harder to do, but it's also less of a reason to do it. And so, you know, these are all things that are good policy. Some of them didn't exist before H R 1. That's another reason. I mean, so some of these, like, for instance, the continuing the pass-through entity taxation, this was created for states that have a different corporate and individual tax code to try to even that out. We don't in Colorado. We have one flat rate for both. It never made sense here. That's why Colorado's been decoupled from that. That decoupling expires because the federal law was expiring. Then H R 1 came, and now the legislature is willing to continue to make sure that that loophole does not exist for corporations. So there's a technical answer on each of those. Mark will be available to talk about kind of what those are, but these are things that either didn't exist before or that, you know, always made some sense to address or to close.
Go to Jesse, then final question, Robert, and then the governor will say the executive order.
So Colorado has long used federal taxable income instead of the justicary income, had only conformity and so sad conformity. And there's been a lot of talk about how we're one of only four states that do this. I'm assuming that's because of just situations like we're in right now. This wasn't exactly a surprise that this federal, this public tax bill was going to happen. Why has Colorado not made some changes away from only conformity and MTI?
Well, first of all, it was a surprise because we were in session, nobody knew what would be in this bill or what would pass. I mean, there's a lot of discussion out there. There's always a lot of discussion in Congress. So there was no way to predict what the tax provisions of the bill would be in April or in May. It didn't pass until July, right? I think it was signed by the president July 4th, if I'm not mistaken. So we knew the changes were going to be made, Jesse, but we didn't know what they were going to be. Let me sort of say with regard to conformity in general, that's a good policy for Colorado. We benefited from it in the past when there are changes in the previous administration. It created hundreds of millions of dollars. Remember?
TCJA created a couple hundred million dollars.
Hundreds of millions of dollars of revenue for our state. So it can work either way, but the benefit to your everyday Coloradan is you don't have to file two sets of taxes. That's a pretty big benefit for an individual to not have to have two totally different sets of taxes. When you look at the overhead, the time, the effort, the work, that's something that we would like to preserve. Again, we've strategically decoupled in a few areas that affect corporations, and we have in the past and will continue. But I think a good north star is that for an everyday taxpayer in our state, we don't want to require duplicate paperwork.
Yeah, it's mostly a clarification. Mark, in your update last week, you were saying that the current taxpayer deficit is going to be like $155 million, and this is $783. So just want to clarify that.
True, yeah. So the total loss of revenue we're estimating is $1.2 billion, which is what, it's close to what Ledge Council also. The difference is we revised that some of that loss of revenue is in the state education fund, so about $130 million from the state education fund and about $40 million from Prop 123, which is the housing fund. So the total impact to the general fund is just over $1 billion, but we're still losing the 1.2. It just pushes out, as we know, the state education fund has sustainability issues, so that will push out more problems into the future. But for this year, that we revise those down so that the general fund is only the $1 billion, not the 1.2 roughly.
And then $300 million of that was surplus.
And, yeah, 300 was surplus. That's how you get to about the $783 million.
So just to clarify, so what you would want or need to cut is $783 from the general fund this year?
Some combination of revenue cuts, temporary use of reserve, that's the gap that has to be filled. Any other, last, last question? So I think we'll be seeing you all August 21st. And again, I am also announcing the hiring freeze, that that I'm assigning that here today. That takes effect August 27th, which is approximately when we would expect we'd be signing any legislation as well. And so with that, I will make this official. Okay, we'll see everybody soon. It's official. Thank you all for joining us, and we'll be happy to make Mark Ferandino available for questions, as well as Mike Conway of Insurance or other subject area experts. This is all very technical stuff. It's all very technical stuff.